Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. The purpose of this special meeting is to interview finalists for the position of Superintendent of Omaha Public Schools. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
Hallman.
Present.
America.
Present.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. We have two items on the agenda tonight. We will be interviewing Dr. Cheryl Logan and Mr. Harrison Peters. I would also like to thank everybody for coming out here tonight. It's always good to see a full crowd. This shows the Board and Omaha Public Schools how much you people and everyone out there care about Omaha Public Schools, so thank you.
Sure, welcome to come off.
And we do have a meeting at February 5th. Good evening, Dr. Logan.
One second. Is your mic on? Okay. All righty. Are you ready? Is there a green light there? All right. He's going to adjust it.
Oh, there you go. Oh, it wasn't on. Sorry. I didn't pass the first test. I apologize.
So, we have an hour allotted for our interview. We have 11 questions. We don't have to fill the entire hour. At the end, you will be able to address any questions that we did not bring up or any things. I'll start off the interview. First question. What experiences have prepared you for this position?
I have spent the last 28 years of my life preparing myself to one day lead a school district. I have been a teacher. I taught one year of elementary, four years of middle, and six years of high, Spanish, French, English as a second language, reading, Spanish for native speakers. And after that, became a school-based administrator and for 13 years led schools. I led elementary school for 10 years and high school for three. I later went on to join Central Office and in Central Office supervised principals and communities and was promoted two and a half years ago to be the Chief Academic Officer. In addition to that, I have my educational background has prepared me for today. I have a bachelor's degree from the University of Maryland, College Park, Fear the Turtle. I have a master's degree from the Johns Hopkins University in Baltimore and a doctorate from the University of Pennsylvania. And those represent my formal training to be prepared for this role. In addition to that formal training, I was raised by John and Shirley Jackson and their training in terms of making sure that you always treat people how you want to be treated, that life without service is not life at all, and that always be prepared to leave a legacy that is greater than yourself. And those are the things that have prepared me for today. I have worked in all kinds of communities and have been able to also participate in board service, to volunteer, and to be a mom of a child who struggled to learn how to read and is now a teacher herself, teaches students with autism. I'm very proud of her. And those are the things that I think have led me to today. Although I say I want to be a superintendent, what I really want to do is to continue my work of making sure that every young person who enters a school has an opportunity to take the right path and that every day when our students enter our schools, they, we have an opportunity to make sure that the education they receive is a game changer if they need that to be a game changer because of their circumstance. I believe that education is a way for, is an equalizer in our society and that public education more specifically is, can change the way and the trajectory, not just of a student but for an entire generation.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Good evening.
In considering the education improvement efforts, how do you identify best practices and build an organizational structure that can produce results? Share examples from your prior experience.
I identify best practice using research and evidence-based practice from school districts that, and that have students similar, have students that fit a profile that is similar to the students that we serve. When you're thinking about looking at educational programs or initiatives, that's something that's really important because there are some programs that do not work across all contexts and are not differentiated enough to meet the needs of a system such as Omaha Public Schools. In terms of structure, I think that the structure needs to be bottom-up and that the most important people enduring an initiative are the people who are going to implement that initiative, and those are the teachers. We have to have teacher voice when we are selecting the kinds of things that we think are going to change outcomes for students all along the way. So that starts from looking at the research. So oftentimes, we don't share the research with teachers. We tell them that it's evidence-based, but having an opportunity to co-construct because we all have, there's a level playing field in terms of the knowledge base and we aren't keeping it as, in a secret container in Central Office, is a way to get buy-in. We also need to, in terms of structure, we need to have ways for a feedback loop because the accountability, and as you think about a hierarchy, the accountability is there for those who report to the Board of Education, and so in that case, it's, it would be me. And we need to make sure that that feedback loop includes our classroom teachers and includes our building-level administrators in that effort. An example that I'd like to give is around early literacy in Philadelphia. We have created through collective impact, a robust and sustainable early literacy initiative that will go on forever because we're always going to teach little children how to read. That initiative includes, in terms of collective impact, includes foundation support. It includes all of our nonprofits who work in the literacy space. It includes our free library and more, most importantly, includes our school district and the folks who lead Central Office. That structure has allowed us to gain teacher buy-in. We have course corrected, and we have course corrected based on teacher buy-in. One example I'll give is that initially, we were hiring our literacy coaches that work only directly with teachers for one year to coach, coach up and build capacity. We quickly learned, and it's kind of funny now that we thought that it would be one year, that we needed to extend that to two years. And after our second year, we realized that this probably will be in perpetuity. One, there's some level of mobility amongst our staff, and two, it's not just, we, once you have people become expert at one level, you still need to go deeper. And so we pivoted and not just are thinking about teaching or developing our teachers in over one summer, but coming back for additional summers and having teachers go deep within grades so that we build capacity for our system. And we further realize that this is also a pipeline for us as we think about succession planning and being prepared as teachers retire and to continue the effort as we move forward. You're welcome.
What barriers do you anticipate facing during the first year as superintendent? And how can the Board help you navigate those challenges?
Well, I think a couple of things. The first year, if selected, I would be the first female, the first African-American. And I think that I know that I stand on the shoulders of the people that have come before me. I did some research. I know Lucinda Gamble was the first African-American teacher in this district and that Eugene Skinner was the first African-American principal in the district. And I think about the challenges that they had during the time that they became leaders and that the challenges that I face would be very small compared to the challenges that they face. And so I think that the challenges are learning the district because I'm not from Omaha. I'm a quick study. I've never met a stranger, so I have, you know, know how to build relationships. So I think that's the first thing. This is, we're in the people business and it's highly relational and people have to know how much you care because they probably already think, well, she might know a lot, but they really need to know how much I care about that. I think building the board relationship is something that's really important, that I need to be able to, that we need to be able to build a trust. We need to build excellent communication and that communication extends to the, to students. It extends to parents and teachers, administrators, and all stakeholders in the community. So I think that those are, those are things that I see, I see them as positive challenges and not necessarily as barriers and the things that you would have to do as you enter any, as you enter any job. I speak specifically about those other challenges because I know that that's something that is important to the people that I've met along the way and I like to, I like to public, I really believe in transparency and I like to publicly talk about those because I think that they are something that will be on the minds of some and for me especially.
Good evening, Dr. Logan. I have your next question.
Thank you.
Okay. One of the beliefs of this Board is that we must address disparities in student outcomes. Please describe how you have approached this conversation among various communities and what initiative have you placed in your district to address this challenge? What results have you seen?
In my current district, we have a choice system in high school. We have 40,000 students in high school. 20,000 of them or so go to magnet schools and the other 20,000 are in our neighborhood high schools. Our neighborhood high schools have a lot more challenges. They take all comers and so there's no selecting, they have, you know, any student who lives in the catchment area. And so one of the things that we did was to make a big investment in our neighborhood high schools with our ninth grade academies to shore up the eighth grade to ninth grade transition and then to ensure that all of our ninth graders in our neighborhood high schools finish ninth grade in one year. And that may not, may seem unremarkable to some, but nationally, the average is 25% of ninth graders repeat. And we know that the opportunity for those ninth graders to finish greatly diminishes into the single digits for some demographic groups if they do not finish ninth grade in one year. So we establish our ninth grade academies. We dedicated resources. We think of three things for ninth, for our ninth graders. Attendance, which is key. We look at attendance in a different way. We don't look at average daily attendance. We look at a much more evidence-based number, which is 95%. And that students who have 95% attendance, their rate of graduation, their rate of graduation is in the minimum in the 80s. And so we looked at that. So when we talk about the percentage, we talk about the percentages of students who have 95% attendance that's higher and look to move the needle that way, which is nine days and is doable for children. We also think about agency for our students. Many of our ninth graders have many parental roles that they take on, so they make a lot of decisions about whether or not they're going to attend. We have each of our ninth graders look at their eighth grade attendance and set goals for their ninth grade attendance that are reasonable for them to improve. And our goal is to move, we look, move our children over from whatever bracket they're in to the next bracket, and the brackets are 95 to 100, 90 to 95, et cetera. And we look at their behavior. Our goal is to have a small number, less than 10% of our ninth graders having out-of-school suspension and restorative practice so that we can look at ways to keep our students in school. Strong and positive relationships with our ninth graders is key, so we look at the connectedness that they have and how they connect. The students who are involved in athletics or who are involved in a club or have some opportunity to connect with their classmates will likely sustain. And the last thing that we look at is credit attainment, and that is obviously kids need to be there. If they behave, they will likely be there. And then to make sure that they earn at least five quality credits, which qualifies them to move to 10th grade, and ways that we can support that. Ninth graders need second chances. Well, actually, I think everybody, every human on the planet needs a second chance. Ninth graders especially need second chances. So how do we encourage those second chances? We have, our teachers are always in charge of giving those second chances. That's not something administration dictates, but we said, we have established a culture in our schools of understanding that it's in all of our benefit to make sure that if kids don't do what they need to do the first time, that they have an opportunity to course correct as needed. Thank you. Sure.
I have your next question, Dr. Logan.
Thank you.
How do you plan to build trust and confidence with teachers, administration, and the community? Please cite examples.
I need to be honest. I need to be transparent. I need to be willing to go and talk to people who may differ, whose opinions may differ about how we need to get things done and really listen. I need to listen more than talk and get out as much as possible to understand the experience that our families and our children are having in our schools, unfiltered. And I need to have a feedback loop where they can talk to me directly and I need to make that reasonable in terms of there are 24 hours in a day and there are many people who want to talk, who will want, who will want to talk to me. I think that when there is a mess-up or something happens that we don't want to happen, I need to be proactive about talking about why and how we're going to correct it for the future and who the people are that we need to help. This job, this is not a one-person job. This job requires a team of people and I have to build that trust with them as well. Lastly, I'll talk about, a little bit about visibility. People want to see their superintendent not just at schools, but at sports events. They want to see their superintendent in the faith community. They want to see their superintendent at the, at fairs. And I think an opportunity to get out there and do that is a way also to, for folks to get to know me because you can't know, you can't trust someone that you don't know. And I need to have as many opportunities that I can to build trust with folks. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Omaha Public Schools is facing, is facing a budget shortfall mainly due to an unfunded pension liability. Can you please tell us what steps you would take, the process you would employ when facing a significant annual budget shortfall?
When you look at a budget this size, you need to look at your fixed costs and your recurring costs. And so obviously pension is one of your recurring costs. The, when you're facing a shortfall, you have to look at how you can first, look at what's the fix, if there is one, that's, that you can do with quickly around your fixed costs. And if it's not a quick fix, make a plan, a long-range plan to work to get your fixed costs under control. In terms of recurring cost, you need to look at the through line between the recurring costs, contracts that may not be producing benefits, and where you have programs or recurring costs that are not moving the needle in terms of student achievement. And lastly, I think that you need to do this work not by yourself. You have an excellent thought partner in the Chief Financial Officer. Obviously, the Board of Education is a partner with the superintendent in this work. And then the And then, the stakeholders in the community. Transparency around the budget is also something that is really important. Whatever resources that we do have, and they are significant, we need to make sure that we are spending them well, that we aren't wasting any money. And there isn't even that perception. Because getting people to the table, if there's that perception, it will be difficult. So I think creating a committee that includes stakeholders inside and outside of the district from all sorts of groups that will not just be short-term, well, you need a short-term and then a, a short-term, perhaps a short-term committee and a long-term commitment from folks around doing this work. And also learn from other districts who have faced similar challenges. And how they've been able to, there are some excellent examples around the country of other districts that have faced these challenges. And to do it that way. I think the thing that I would, that is, brings me caution, because I've been on both sides as a, being a teacher and experiencing when there's been a budget shortfall and being a principal as well, is to not feel like my voice is included. So to make sure that negotiated, that bargaining units are also included on that committee around the planning. Because sometimes it's the complexity of budgets. And I know for me, as a person who had to learn budgets, was something I appreciated once I got on the other side in terms of learning the complexity. And I wonder how it would have benefited not just me, but also my colleagues to understand those complexities as it was appropriate when we were on the other side and experiencing them. You're welcome.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening.
As a public school district, we frequently have to work and collaborate with other levels of government. In your current position, how have you established and maintained good working relationships with your local, state, and federal elected officials? What is a policy or highlight that has come from those relationships?
I work every week with elected officials. We do have an office of communications that leads the work. And so, I regularly update, we have our, our city council is our, is our funding stream for city funds. So I provide updates regularly for the chair of the education committee on the city council. And frequently, that includes other city council members as a part of the updates. We have a second city council person who is specifically interested in special education, which is a huge chunk of our budget. And so, I also provide regularly, regularly scheduled updates for them. Prior to our budget season, we do briefings, several briefings from all divisions prior to the budget hearing. So that, and it, what it has done, it has turned what used to be at least a one and a half day budget hearing into a three-hour budget hearing, which is what we experienced last year, which was remarkable in terms of our testimony before the budget was decided and during our budget presentation. In terms of state officials, we work directly with our state legislature, our state senators. In terms of lobbying, we also provide school visits. That is a very powerful way to see, so folks can see how we are spending the money. And we, we do that with our career, from our career in technical education to our early literacy programs. So folks can see what, see the great work that is going on in our classrooms. In terms of federal officials, we have some very large federal grants. And we do updates for our federal officials on how we are doing. Our largest one is more than $30 million with Gear Up to fund high, college access. And we, again, do regular, regular updates. Our budget books are open as well, and this is a kind of a segue back to the last question. Our budget books are open in terms of how we are spending money because many of the relationships are around that. But that's some of the ways that I build relationships. Lastly, I would say that we have, many of our city council folks are proponents and advocates for our school district. And as appropriate, we leverage relationships with them when we need to move the needle on some promises that some businesses make. One, I'll give you an example. One is a large cable company that I won't say the name of, and who received a very large donate, very large contract and made promises with the district. And we needed to, from our perspective, hold that person accountable. And we leveraged a relationship with our city council because this was an opportunity that was going directly to our young people in the form of internships. And so, we look at that loop as well. Not in a gotcha way, but in a way that this, the reason that that promise was made is because this is something that is good for our city. This is about our workforce development strategy. And we need to make sure that as we, as folks are holding us accountable, that we do that as well. You're welcome.
I have the next question. I believe you answered a little bit of this question already. How will you ensure your visibility in our district and our community? What would you do specifically?
Oh, I love to go to schools. Yesterday was a blast. And I think there's an opportunity for me to hear from young people. One thing that young people do is they tell the truth about their experiences in school. They are the best, they are the best observers of our, of our teachers. And sometimes it, it's, it's great, and sometimes it's eyebrow raising. But I, that's one way that I do that. I think visibility at school events is also really important as well. And opportunities to have folks come in in terms of advisory councils. Some of them very formal, and some of them informal, and perhaps ad hoc. So they would not necessarily be regularly scheduled. But we have an issue coming up and would really great to hear from some folks who may be interested in, in a topic. And I have found that those are really good ways to, to be, to be visible. I think it's important to be visible in the faith community. I learned often as a principal that my students on the day that they were in their, in their day of worship, wherever they were, they acted a lot different than they did in school. And it's very eye-opening and revealing to hear about their angelic behavior in their faith community and compare it to some fun times we were having at school. And so, I think that those are places that, you know, are very welcoming and, and good for me to get to know the community and I think understand people's experiences on a different level. And I, I always say sporting events as well because I've seen students who could not sit still in school not take their eye off the wrestling coach. And those are other places where kids can show their skills. And it can be really exciting. I think any kinds of competitions, et cetera, are great places for kids to see their superintendent. And I will tell you, my first, my first week as a high school principal, I went out and I ran with the football team. And they thought it was weird, but, and it was hot out there. So I actually had to cancel practice. The coach was not happy with me. But the, we, the humidity and the, and the temperature were too high. And so, but it was a really great opportunity for me to just get to know kids on another level. Here I am, I'm their new principal, and the first thing they get to say with me is, I went, they went, they came out and, and I don't think everybody has to get out and run. There's other things you can do. But to have some novelty about your practice that keeps things interesting for people, especially for young people, they like the idea of less-than-predictability.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I think you also maybe touched a little bit on this, but we'll let you expand. How do you promote shared vision and teamwork among central office staff and with building leaders and teachers to achieve educational goals? Provide an example from your experience.
I think that the most important thing that we do is we co-create vision. I have, people have asked me about my vision and I have shared with them that one way not to build shared vision is to come in, tell your vision, share your vision, and then we have shared vision. That's not shared vision. And I think that talking about what our values are, what our value statements are, and looking at our practice and what's the through line, and you will hear me say through line a lot because it's something that I really fundamentally believe in and practice around that. With my division, my current division, my academic division, we did that around our, what competencies you need to be able to do this job well. And we came up with five. And we came to agreement very quickly around five competencies. And as we have our meetings, we look to see whether or not, and it's not just that we do it there. What I've noticed is the leaders that I have in that division, I see them doing it with their own staffs and using their, the competencies that they create for their, for their team, using ours as the base to create them for their own team. And I think that that's one way that we do that. That as we look at school visions and school vision, mission and vision statements, we think about how they align with the, with the district vision. And if we need to make any changes, then we, we do that, we do that work together. Building leaders know their, know the school district better than anybody. When times when we are having, when stressful times, we lean on them tremendously to make sure that we can get the job done. And hearing, they should be able to not just hear their words that they say in the vision and mission, but experience it in the kinds of actions and decisions that we make as they impact their school. So I think that that's, when I think about building shared vision, that that's one way to look at. It's not a meeting. It's a process. It evolves over time. And again, is predicated on trust and transparency and following through on what the mission and the vision statements say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Logan.
Good evening.
What would you expect from us as a board? And how would you gauge our effectiveness in working with you?
I think we need to have, I think that I expect great communication. And I expect communication that is two-way. So if there's an issue out there brewing in the community, and you know, you, you know I need to know about it, and you think I don't know about it, to make sure that, that I do. And even if you aren't sure, to make sure that we bring that up in a nice, open forum. Because it may not just be impacting you and your constituents, but you know, the constituents more broadly. And so, I think about, I think about that. I think about trusting me and my team to deliver. And when we fall short, that there is a way to address, that we have fallen short, you know, in a, in a, in a way that respects the role of management and is also respects the role of you as the policymakers for this school district. I, I couldn't, I can't do this job without your support. And I want us to be successful. And a successful superintendent needs a successful board and vice versa. And I think that that's the way, that that's the way I look at the relationship. I'm honest to a fault. Sometimes it won't be, it's unpleasant, my honesty. And, but I will work hard to, and I have throughout my career, to be consistent and be true to myself and my beliefs, the ones that I stated at the beginning of the interview. And for me, that North Star, it's always north. You're welcome.
Okay. Final question. Is there something else you would like us to know that you have not already had an opportunity to share?
I think I have said it to many people. I am, I am, I'm not just saying it. I am really humbled and thrilled to be here. Everyone I have met has been Nebraska nice. And I think that you should know that no one will work harder. No one will be more committed. And the way I feel about the work that we do with children is in my heart and is in my soul. And I don't think there's any more important work in this world. And so, if selected, I commit to following through on what I've said this evening. And I'm glad there are people here recording it. So that should it need to be played back at any time, it's available for view. But I'm really humbled and really appreciate the opportunity to come to Omaha. And worst-case scenario, I've met a really, a bunch of really nice people. And I'm appreciative of that. That's it.
Thank you so much, Dr. Logan.
Thank you.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
Where are my latches? So I've always got four. Why, who wrote Amanda? Matt Ray, are we going to separate your clothes?
No!
I don't know if I can sit by each other every day.
We are ready to begin. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Mr. Peters. Tonight, we will have an interview that will last approximately an hour. We don't have to fulfill the full hour. There'll be 11 questions. Each board member will have their own individual question. And then we'll move on with the process. Again, thank you for being with us tonight, and I'll start off the interview. What experiences have prepared you for this position?
First of all, I just wanted to say-
Sorry.
There it is. Is that better? All right, contact. Rewind. Mr. President, Mr. Snow, I appreciate the opportunity to answer the board. It is an absolute pleasure for me to be able to stand here, or sit here, obviously, and share my credentials and vibe for what I think is an amazing opportunity to lead an absolutely extraordinary school district that has so many things to be proud of. So first, I want to thank you now. What has brought me to this place? Obviously, I started out as a classroom teacher, fourth and fifth grade. I've been an assistant principal, a principal at the middle school level, a high school principal. And I started out my executive leadership journey in the city of Chicago where I supervise about 40 schools on the south side of Chicago. And I think about all the experiences that I've had. And I always like to share that I believe that it's part preparation and it's part sort of standing on a corner of opportunity and preparation, I like to say. Because if you look at my resume, you can clearly see that I've been in some extraordinary places. And I had, and my family and I, we've had an amazing journey. And that's been by design. That's been very calculated because I wanted to put myself into positions to where I can learn from some of the great leaders across the country. And if you look, I've worked in some very intense, in some amazing places, and I've had some great experiences. And all those opportunities have prepared me to sit in this place. So I come with a wealth of experience, I come world-traveled, but I also come ready to establish roots because all of those experiences hopefully have led me to this destination.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. In considering education improvement efforts, how do you identify best practices and build an organizational structure that can produce results? Share examples from your prior experience.
Absolutely. So quite frankly, I think best practices are only best practices if they're producing results. There are a lot of things that we do that sound good, look good, and taste good. But at the end of the day, if they're not creating better outcomes for children, then I would argue if they're even best practices. One of the things I think that's important is aligned with best practices is you've got to have an innovative organization. You've got to figure out how you unleash innovation across an area. Innovation doesn't rest in just one man. And I'm thinking about an example, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Roger Bannister. But Roger Bannister, he was a long-distance runner. And he was the first person to run the mile in four minutes, where all the doctors across the world said that it was humanly impossible. But he didn't give up. That was innovation. And this guy, his name is Fred Smith, he turned in a paper to his Yale professor and he got a C. And he was wondering, why did I get a C? And his Yale professor said, "In order for you to get anything higher than a C, your idea must be viable." Well, we all know that Fred Smith is the founder of FedEx. And FedEx has almost shut down the United States Post Office. So when we talk about best practices, you have to align those things that actually evidence itself out for children. One of the things that we do in my district currently is we highlight best practices. So when we see things across schools that are working well, specifically in our principal and our teacher weekly, we highlight those things and we highlight them as labs of innovation. So at the end of the day, we have to be careful because a best practice may not necessarily work for your site. So these are examples of people doing great work. As an opportunity to go observe and share and learn, but be very careful because each site, each school is very unique.
Still writing. Thank you. I have your next question. What barriers do you anticipate facing during the first year superintendent? And how can the board help you navigate those challenges?
Oh my goodness, absolutely. So it was interesting because yesterday I had the amazing opportunity of visiting four of our schools and just engaging some great folks that really care about children. And I asked each principal, I said, "Gosh, you know, if I'm lucky enough to be the superintendent, what's that one piece of advice that you would give me?" And they all said the same three words: "Listen, listen, and listen." So I take that to heart. So as a first-year superintendent, I think some of the challenges, and especially coming in as an outsider, knowing the political landscape, knowing the historical precedents, knowing who our formal leaders are, and also the why. There's a reason we do things the way that we do them. So take some time to learn people, learn communities, learn what we do. And perhaps you'll be ready to make a decision a short time after that. But I think a lot of what we've got to do is be available, be strong communicators, and also have the opportunity to engage in rich, clear, and cogent conversation. And really put the issues on the table. So as a first-year superintendent, I think some of the challenges will be learning the political landscape, learning how do you navigate a lot of those issues. And D, who are the folks in the neighborhood, A, in the communities, B, and also in the business world that we can engage to help be thought partners around lifting the vision of the board.
Okay, thank you. I have your next question. One of the beliefs of this board is that we must address disparities in student outcomes. Please describe how you have approached this conversation among various communities and what initiative have you placed in your district to address this challenge? What results have you seen?
Yeah, so a number of disparities. Obviously, achievement gaps in graduation, gaps in students of color being identified as gifted and overly being labeled as special needs. Those are gaps that I've experienced in my travels. Also, the equity gap just around, we've got a potential bond hearing coming up, a bond program coming up. And the equities and inequities in facilities. One of the things that we've done in Hillsborough County is our board has been really aggressive around this notion of racial equity and what it actually means to serve disenfranchised students and communities. So they've actually enacted a board policy that talks about equity. And the thing about that is you've got to be very careful when you talk about equity because we all believe that there should be more students enrolled in algebra, more students of color enrolled in AP, more given academic opportunities. But when we really talk about equity, you get in some tough issues around busing. Or do we want racially identifiable schools? And what do we believe around what the demographics and the makeup of our children? So those are really tough conversations that we've begun to have in my district about ensuring that all means all. Some of the results that we've had the last couple of years, our graduation rates are a historic high. We hit 82.9% this year. With that, the gap in graduation has closed almost 10 points with our students of color. While our, our student, our white students have also increased their graduation rate by 2%. So we're actually lifting not only the floor, but the ceiling of academic achievement as well. So that's part of the issue, part of the opportunity that we're exercising to close the achievement gap.
I have your next question. How do you plan to build trust and confidence with teachers, administration, and the community? Please cite examples.
Yeah, so there is a lot of things that are happening nationally. There are a lot of things that are happening locally. And it's really, really tough time. Communities sometimes in some pieces, some places feel disenfranchised. Some teachers feel as if they're not supported. The folks in the district office are working really, really hard to ensure we're doing what's best for kids. And it's just a tough time. So when we talk about building trust, I think we've got to be very clear around the issues that are on the table. I think we have to be very clear. We also have to be very visible. You can't instill trust and you're not out in front of people having conversations, talking about what we believe, trying to develop shared agreements and all of those things. So at the end of the day, building trust, it means being visible. Building trust means actually listening. Building trust means that I get to see my footprint on some of the decisions that we've made in this district. And also, I think the other part is, is how are we reaching out to the silent voices? We know across this great city, there are a lot of voices that want to be heard, but there are also some silent voices that don't always get heard. So how are we putting ourselves in our churches, in our community groups, in front of all the folks that have an opinion and also can help us leverage resources to take our district to the next level?
Thank you.
Okay, I've got the next question. Omaha Public Schools is facing a budget shortfall mainly due to an unfunded pension liability. Can you please tell us the steps you would take, the process you would employ when facing a significant annual budget shortfall?
Yeah, so no stranger to that, especially about the pension piece. During my time in Chicago and even up until today, there's still a huge pension shortfall. The unfortunate reality is that when you look at a district's budget, 80 to 85%, maybe even a little bit more of that budget is personnel. Our biggest bill, our biggest check that we write, is payroll. So typically, you look at, okay, so how do we downsize? One of the things that I'd like to do before we even think about that is let's revisit our priorities and our spending. And let's make certain that we have aligned our priorities to our spending before we even think about looking at people. In addition, in my current district, we've been also challenged with a significant budget shortfall to the tune of about $140 million. So the last two or three years, we've been trying to right-size our district. One of the things that we've been very clear about is that we lead from the heart and that our people are our best assets. So the strategy that we've taken in our current district is that we use our attrition rates to cut positions. So we don't cut warm bodies, but as people retire and transition out, we no longer fund those positions. That has helped us really preserve part of the culture of our organization. And then the other piece is now, how do you begin to revisit your priorities? What are those things that we can say? But the idea also is that pension, that pension deficit, that's also reoccurring cost. So it's not like a one-time fix. So we've also got to right-size the organization so that we are also living within our means.
I think everyone's right.
All right. As a public school district, we frequently have to work and collaborate with other levels of government. In your current position, how have you established and maintained good working relationships with your local, state, and federal elected officials? What is a policy or highlight that has come from those relationships?
So two ideas sort of surface when I think about that. Recently, as a result of Hurricane Irma, we've had a large number of our family members from Puerto Rico to transition to Orlando, I mean, sorry, to transition to Tampa. Right now, we serve about 1,000 students from Puerto Rico. So part of the work with some of our local and state officials is, A, how do we ensure that they get the services that they need? Are there opportunities for additional funding? Even around high school graduation, is there a way that we can ensure that they get get a graduation, a diploma from their home state? Or for those seniors, if they want to, how can we sort of relax some of the requirements so they can get a State of Florida or Hillsborough County diploma? So that's one of the things that we've done. Also, we've just been highlighted as a highlight district in the state of Florida for our implementation of a statewide curriculum of African-American studies. And that has come with not just state and local officials, but also community members who've worked thoroughly to ensure that we're integrating that curriculum into all of our schools, all of our secondary schools. So we've just become sort of a program, a prototype district for the implementation of African-American studies. And that has been endorsed and supported by the state.
I have the next question. You answered a little bit of this question already, but you can elaborate. How will you ensure your visibility in our district and community? And what would you do specifically?
There are a number of things that I would do to ensure my visibility. First thing is to get out. Part of my nature, my makeup, I tell folks I'm a gym rat. I love being in the gym. I love being in schools. I feel most comfortable. But I also understand that the work is more expansive to schools. So we've got to have town hall meetings, we've got to go into the churches, we've got to go into the community centers. In, in Hillsborough County, we've got a huge migrant population that comes seasonal. So around November, I get an influx of migrant students. And you've got to meet those families in the strawberry fields. You've got to engage them in conversations. You've got to tell them how important their presence and their voice. The other piece is with our post-secondary partners and our business partners, how do we get in front of them and how do we coalesce around a real, clear theme around moving this district forward? And then how do we also leverage resources? So I think it's a full-sale assault in getting out into the community, leveraging our community groups, getting into churches all around, all four corners of our district.
Thank you.
Good evening. How do you promote shared vision and teamwork among central office staff and with building leaders and teachers to achieve education goals? And then would you please provide us an example from your experience?
Absolutely. So this is a really sort of involved answer. I'll just tee that up. The interesting piece is in other places, when I ask folks, "Tell me, what do you think the role of central office is?" And you can get 100 different answers if you ask 100 different people. Now, the reality is they're probably not wrong. Central office is responsible for a lot. But when we're talking about school support, I think it's, it's very important that we define the role of central office. So one of the things that we've done in my current district is we've established a very clear theory of action. And what we believe is we believe that the principal of the building is the primary actor, the principal being the protagonist, and he or she creating the conditions for teachers to make the magic happen. So if we believe that that's our theory of action, then it stands to reason that we will absolutely align our resources and the function of a central office to support that. So then quite frankly and clearly, the role of the central office becomes that of a support. So instead of calling schools and telling folks, "This is what I need to happen, this is what I want to see", we call schools or engage with our stakeholders in the field and say, "What is it that you need? How is it that I can serve you?" So my vision for our central office is continue to be able to morph to the daily needs of our schools. And I'm hoping that principals and schools and teachers will be able to see that that's the role of the central office as a support arm. There is a compliance piece. We've got to be compliant with federal- So the board is the primary governance structure of the district. And I think it's important that we work in concert around a shared set of goals and agreement that's focused on student achievement. My expectation for the board is to ensure that we're implementing and developing policies that support the learning and achievement of all students. The expectation of the board is that we have very clear communication protocols and think through, how do we leverage our communities, our constituents, to sort of enact and execute the strategic plan of the board? It's also reciprocal, it's a reciprocal relationship. And then the other piece, when we talk about sort of how I would gauge the effectiveness of the board, I think at the end of the day, our job is to increase student outcomes. Our job, as in our mission statement, all students, every day, being successful. And at the end of every cycle, my expectation is that we have a strong, clear conversation around where kids are, where they're headed, and how successful we are. So at the end of the day, for me, it's all about, have we created more effective and better outcomes for the children that we serve?
All right, final question. Is there anything else you would like us to know that you have not already had an opportunity to share?
Well, I think that this is arguably the most critical decision that the board will probably make in our recent city's history. And I know that you don't take that lightly. And I just want to say how much I appreciate the opportunity to be able to stand for you as a potential, the first superintendent of color in this district. And I can tell you for certain that I know that there have been folks that have come before me, that have paved the way for me to be able to sit at this table. And I don't take that lightly, and for that, I'm forever indebted. I will share with you that I hope I've been able to prove my ability to come in and increase graduation rates, raise the bar for all children, and decrease the achievement gap through making sound decisions, doing what's best for children, and being fiscally responsible. I'm very doubtful that you'll find anybody that will work harder than me. I challenge you to find anybody that will work harder than me in my team.
as finalists and all the candidates who applied for the position of superintendent.
For me, it's all about children. And because of the story that I have, because of my upbringing and my experiences, it has
We're very fortunate to have a stellar pool which to select, and I believe I can speak for my colleagues and say that for both of the candidates, we have two amazing qualified
allowed me to look at education very differently. And what I've learned as a father and as a brother, that education is the great equalizer,
individuals that will serve this district as their time as superintendent.
and we have to, A, move with all due diligence, but also work day and night to ensure that
At this time, I would like to take a ten-minute recess break to allow Mr. Peters to leave
we're creating better outcomes for the kids that we serve.
the building and allow anybody in the audience to take a restroom break, as well as board
So at the end of the day, this has been an extraordinary opportunity, and I would love,
members. We'll reconvene at eight-ten.
love, love to be the next superintendent of Omaha Public Schools.
Thank you. And I apologize, that's five minutes.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Mr. Peters. Whew.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion for the selection of superintendent for Omaha Public Schools. Ms. Merica?
I move that the Board of Education authorize the board officers to enter into negotiation with Dr. Cheryl Logan to serve as superintendent of Omaha Public Schools beginning on July 1st, 2018. Second...
There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Merica, second by Ms. Gotti. Discussion?
Okay. I guess I will start off then. I think we were incredibly fortunate to have, first, a highly qualified pool of applicants, and then an especially group of two highly qualified finalists. And Dr. Logan stands out to me for the work that she has done in Philadelphia, in their schools, knowing the challenges that they've had as a district, prior to her being there, and the growth that they've had since that time. And really, the openness she has to coming and learning about the district, communicating, working with our stakeholders, being the teachers and principals and our community members.
Thank you. Ms. Gotti?
I would just like to thank, I think, everyone who did apply for the job, all seventy-four folks, and the two finalists who were here this evening. They did an incredible job of sharing with us their passion for children. It came out very clearly. And I would also like to thank our search firm for helping us through the process and certainly making it very, much easier for us to be able to manage through because of their hard work and dedication. So I just really am appreciative of how the process worked and of everyone who applied.
Dr. Pearlman?
I also want to echo the sentiment so far, thanking every applicant who chose to apply and the search firm as well. What stood out to me for Dr. Logan was her emphasis on collaboration, communication, and a real honest sense of humility and wanting to work as a team member with everyone in the community and the leaders in the school building. So those are some of the things that stood out to me as well. But both applicants were just exceptional in my mind, but those are just some of the things that stood out to me.
Mr. Scanlon?
For those of you that don't know in the public, we, as a board, met in small groups with six, I don't know if you want to call them semifinalists, but it really came down to splitting hairs. We had six very qualified semifinalists, and it was, you know, just a great process to be able to sit there and really analyze the different candidates that were all very qualified. Dr. Logan did an excellent job of presenting herself and kind of separating from the field to rise above. But there were six great semifinalists that I think would have served our district well. I just think we are very fortunate that Dr. Logan has, you know, kind of rose to the top. So I think that it's been a very good process.
I also want to echo some of the things that have been said already. I want to thank the community for being paid